Okay, we have a few discussion points of business tonight. We're not going to act on any of these. They're going to be points of discussion only. And the main reason is I'm new. I'm not sure the full procedure due for these. So, we are learning. There is a procedure. I'm learning the book. It's only about a mile thick and it's written by lawyers. So, it's taken me a while to read. And we've never done this before. So, either was the city council. We never did look at anything. But we're looking to repeal some line items and specific ordinances. So, we want to make sure, A, we discuss it. If we do want to do it, we will make sure we do it correctly and legally. Um, so, bear with us. So, we do want to have a discussion point first. And the first one, uh, hey Clarence, you want to bring these up since you, this is your item for the discussion?
A four-way stop at Eighteenth and Western. I did a, my personal traffic study there for north and south traffic. And, um, per a weekend at times, at different times a day. But the average of 21 cars north and south, there's two cars that goes east and west. So, there's quite a back-up north and south. I talked to the people we discussed earlier, being the local businesses, and they had no problems with it when I talked to them. So, they seem to be on board with making that decision.
There were two businesses in there, wasn't there?
Yeah.
There was more?
Yeah, just two.
Just two? And they were both fine with it?
Yes.
Are you talking about the owners of the business? I myself worked at Roots. I worked at Green Manufacturing. And I would have been madder than heck if there was a stop at Eighteenth and Western that I could not get out of.
We already talked to Stance and them too, and they, they didn't have an issue with it either.
Did you talk to any of the employees that, um, drive there every day?
I didn't talk to all the employees, no.
Well, I, I drive Western Avenue a lot. And I know they took out the one at, uh, Twenty-Second, I believe it is, in Western.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first and Western. Twenty-first and Western. And at Twenty-first and Twenty-second, there are times it's really hard to get out of there. But I know that's more residential. But I drive up and down that street a lot. And I, there are a lot of times when there are other cars coming, I don't know, you know, east and west. I, plus, my problem would be, my main problem would be, if you took that out, you, it would be a straight shot from Eighth Street to Thirtieth with no restraint whatsoever. And that's when we, I think it was proposed by the state to take out the stoplight on Park Road at Walmart, where Walmart used to be. Uh, we fought to keep that because of that. Because there wouldn't, there would be nothing from Eighth Street to Thirty-, to Thirtieth.
In the past, when we've had, um, businesses on the west side of the tracks, we only had a traffic light there. And that turned to caution after 10:00. So, north and south traffic still had full flow at that time also. It worked quite well. My idea of this is try to get traffic through the city.
Have you, have you talked to the police chief or the police department about it?
No.
That's part of the formal process. I know it's in there.
I, I did my own little study because I wanted to see if it was working enough.
The, the other issue for my intervene is there's quite a bit of truck traffic comes in and out of there, coming out of Stance and back in there, semis, big semis. So, I just thought I'd throw that in there for worth.
I just know how it is at Twenty-first and Twenty-second. And it is a little bit of a backlog, but I, I've not experienced that much of it going north and south. And I, I travel that road a lot because I live right off of it. I just don't like 22 blocks with no restraint.
Right. I, I do as well because that's how I go to and from work every day. Um, and I actually come off of Eighteenth to get onto Western. Um, and even when I'm working out at the gym, I watch the traffic there. And it's, it's definitely constant, north and south. But you still get, to me, I, I feel like you still get enough cars traveling east and west. Um, what does it take to have a formal traffic study done?
Chief?
We've always just done them ourselves or other people have done them, like, this account.
So, like it, would you track different times of day?
It would be different.
Yes.
Time of day.
What, what'd you say?
Did you do?
Yeah, we, we would do studies.
You track different times of day?
Different times of day.
Different days of the week? I would have to see numbers before I made a decision because...
There is issues both ways.
I mean, I can speak personally because I travel that all the time, but, um, I don't know.
I mean, certain times of day, I understand because it is...
Right.
A lot of traffic. But then there's the remainder, which is the majority of the time, there's not. But I, I agree with, um, Mr. Bishop there with the semis trying to get out east and west or turning on the... So, there's issues both ways.
Right.
We have to take a look at that.
Speaking of that issue though, I know there's a lot of trouble with the semis coming out is because people pull up to the stop sign while coming out. So, there's an issue there also.
Yeah. And that might be a matter of maybe moving north and south, stopping back. Because they do have issues turning. Especially on that corner of Woolsey, can't make that wide turn because you've got that signage right there, so...
And I'm not sure that that wouldn't maybe make the situation at Twenty-first and Twenty-second worse. If you didn't have that stop, people would be flowing straight through and you wouldn't have that break.
It, it takes a while. If you're, if you are trying to turn north on the Western off of Twenty-first Street, almost at any time, it's, it's hard.
Yep.
It's hard to turn south off of Twenty-fourth, but...
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
This is just discussion. This is nothing personal against anyone. This is called brainstorming.
Right.
Something doesn't happen too much in government.
There's been several studies on this, Chief. So, you might look at, at your past records and, but...
Yeah, this...
Go ahead, Dave.
I'm sorry, Dave. I didn't know you were speaking. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, first of all, I appreciate, uh, what Council of Wardens have done because that's something, it sounds like something I would do. If someone asks me a question, I'd go find out all details I could, uh, about the traffic issue. Uh, so, I, I appreciate him doing that. And I, like Chief Bolos, I see both sides. I have been in the traffic when there's, um, half a dozen cars to a dozen cars in a row waiting their turn to get through there. I've also seen when all those cars are lining up one after another to go, there's also somebody coming, uh, from the west to turn onto Western Avenue. And if it wasn't for that stop, um, I don't know when they would get a chance to go through. Uh, so, I see both sides, uh, but, uh, I think leaving as is. For me, in my opinion, my view, I think leaving as is is the best way.
I think we'll have another Park Road if we don't.
Yeah. I think so.
That's my personal view of it.
The other point on that is when you say there's a lot of cars backed up, if that could flow through then that means there would be openings for people to adapt instead of all that congestion. If you watch how that actually flows.
And Chief, this ordinance was signed in 1989 when it changed from a signalized intersection to a four-way stop intersection. So, I'm not sure there's been any discussion or studies done since then.
I'm sure there has.
Yeah.
I'm sure it has.
And we do understand we're talking about, uh, Section B only. We're not talking about whole wardens just there.
That's why I said I, we can't move on any order because I don't know how to do individual line items. A, our attorneys in Florida, jealous. Uh, and B, I'm still learning, so... Uh, let's go on to discussion point D. This, he's got three here. Um, one-way alley off Jones Street, right? Yeah. We don't have to do anything with that right now. This is just discussion point. No, no motions are being made. You want to go ahead and do your second one?
Sure.
Jones?
The reason for this is, um, we recently put in a lift station at the end of that alley. Which is only a small section of that alley actually falls into this one-way section from Jones Street to Vine Street. So, that would enable the utilities department to get back to service their lift station and complete it actually.
Hey Jones, is that something you can pull up TV, please?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
After our last discussion with Clarence about this, I went over there with my own pickup truck to drive through there and see how it is. And I think that any large vehicle that utilities has or a vehicle with a trailer, there's no way they're going to make it into that alley.
I agree.
Coming off of John. So, I mean, not John, but, uh, Joe. Uh, but, uh, but making it, um, removing the, uh, one-way and allowing it back to the two-way as he's recommending, I think is what is going to have to be done in order to get the equipment back there. And, um, I, I did not personally talk to anyone in the area, but I could see would it only be a help to those anywhere.
Which will have to be done, Brad, do you have anything on that?
I should have held it in. Yeah.
I'm not sure what area we're talking about.
Keep going.
You're not going past the...
Yeah, right there.
We're getting close, going up.
Right there.
Right there.
Okay.
The alley over here.
Along the field.
Right by the field.
Keep going, oh, keep going.
Down.
Right there, that alley right there.
That's one?
They're building that lift station there on the very end of that.
Oh, right here, yeah.
I have to smile because what you're actually going to do is allow my guys not to go the wrong way down a one-way.
Hey, while you were smiling back there.
Because there's no way that they can get there any other way.
Right.
Yeah, thank you. They would just turn on the yellow light and head right down there. So, yeah, I think it's needed. It's pretty necessary, really. Yeah. This area here, I might just tell you that belongs to the city. And then the lift station sits right out in here. And I was planning on maybe putting some, uh, buildings and putting this in a little alley along through there anyway at some point in time. That's what I figured was going to be the cure was to come down there that way. Maybe, maybe if you do this, we won't have to mess with that grassy area.
Makes more sense.
So, is that short section there, uh, to the right of the screen is really what we're talking about, correct?
Yes.
John Street or Jones?
Yeah.
Out here. Off of Jones, he's going.
Correct.
Right here.
And that's the section we're changing, that we, you're proposing a change?
Right.
Yeah. So, this right here.
It's a short section.
Short section, that's it.
Yeah.
And that makes sense to me.
Yeah. Yeah, me too.
You can see where people have been cutting through someone's yard.
Yeah.
Uh, because there's only one way out.
Is it just those two houses there that's affected by that, that's in that picture, I presume?
Well, the ones that are rental on the other side and on this side, um, the south side, it's owned property, but I think it's a mistake. Because I think she recently got in.
As opposed to taking the trucks down John Street there and then down Jones Street and then that turn right there, because that's a problem.
Yeah, they're not, they can't make that turn.
Can't make that turn.
Because there's a utility pole right there where you see, that used to be a tree. But they've taken that out since they put utility poles in there.
Any other discussion on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm right. And your last one is, uh, Western Avenue, ordinance 6225, the truck traffic.
This was, um, put in, um, 2014 to eliminate heavy trucks on, uh, Western Avenue. There's also a proposal to make Western Avenue a truck route in this ordinance. But this eliminates our business people from going to and from their businesses and not commencing truck traffic to and from all the business we have on that side of town. I mean, Stance.
You got that chemical plant right there.
Roots.
Yeah.
All, all those.
Yeah, they all have to go.
Recycled.
Yeah.
Integrity metal, I and I.
Right.
Can we speak on this one? Since I was kind of involved in it when we implemented that, anybody that's on that street can drive up at any time they want. They're not excluded from...
Oh, you're talking about... Through traffic.
Through traffic. Yeah. But I just wanted to tell you the reason behind that. The reason this happened is because we have to maintain Western Avenue, the city does. The last time we paved it, we spent, if I remember right, $400,000 to do that stretch from Eighth Street to Thirty-fifth. And we just thought, let's let them drive on the street that the state paves because we can't afford to do that very often. That was like four or five years ago. So, that was how it came about.
I understand the reason that. They're really on, the people that impacts the most are local drivers. They have to stay off of it.
My question is in Section 1 where it says except for local deliveries. So, that is clear.
That's local delivery to the facilities. Local delivery means...
Not from?
I and I going to Sapa. They have to go around and get stuck at the train. Then your contractors get hot loads and then your contractors are screaming mad. It's farmers going from Harrisburg to Cincinnati. Instead of staying straight and going to the bypass, they have to go through the truck route, which my dad always told me if DOT pulls you over, you give him the key, tell him to make that turn off that truck route. It's a nightmare. Scotty, you, you know, it's not to... Truck route is a horrible thing to drive, but it is. Um, my point is, I understand the maintenance side of it, uh, but that is industrial park and we're limiting trucks. It's very confusing for trucks to come through. Um, when we were tearing houses down, the trucks had to go through the small side streets because they were getting pulled over, getting fines for turning on Western Avenue, coming straight to us. So, do we want trucks on small side streets or is trucks on one street? It was kind of my thought process. Uh, but it is confusing. Any trucking company who uses GPS, they're going to take them on the truck route anyway. They're not going down Western Avenue.
That's right.
Their GPS, they're forced to drive with GPS, will take them on the state mandated truck route. So, really, the only people we are impacting are our local businesses. And, um, I know you can speak for many economic development. Dan would say the same thing. It does hurt the, the local guys. And, uh, that's my take on it. And I get the maintenance side. But it was paid one time. I don't remember being paid one time in my life. I don't remember if it was paid when I was young, but I don't remember that, so...
We have two major businesses at the south end of town that wants to use that north and south.
Yeah, and it was confusing to a lot of the businesses for a while too. I do know that. It affects so much that state troopers quit pulling people over because they didn't know what to do.
If I may...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, I grew up over in Edgewood where all the factories are and have always been used to large vehicles in the area. But until, uh, this, uh, 2014 ordinance was put in place, since the 1940s and 50s, there has been heavy vehicles on that road. Unfortunately, it does cost repave and repair. That is a cost of us having industry in this town. If you choose not to have industry in this town, then we won't have tore up roads. But I'm glad they're here. And, um, I think that, uh, agreeing with the original suggestion, I, I think it would be time to allow vehicles, heavier vehicles, back on the road.
How, excuse me, if I may interject, Dave, how did, how do you, how would we control it?
Control what?
If we abide by this, you know, determine what truck weighs how much?
Well, that's why, it, it's, it's the tags on the truck. It's not what you're carrying.
But, I mean...
You look at your tags, they tell you.
It'd be tough to enforce them.
Not really. When you pull them over, you see the tag. I mean, it's easy, but it's...
I'm just talking about...
There's no way for us to weigh them.
Exactly.
No, you don't weigh them. You go by the tags. It's similar when DOT pulls you over. They can weigh you for your weight, but they're checking your tags. It'll mean disorderance, what your tags say. And your G W, your truck.
I mean, the, the original idea was good, you know, to save that road because it does cost. Uh, but, uh, I think that's, unfortunately, that's the cost of, uh, being an industrial town.
For doing business.
Any other discussions by council? No?
I was welcome to public at...
What, what one?
At a...
I haven't done a public meeting yet.
Any future meetings?
Yeah, we haven't done a public meeting yet. They'll get their opportunity here in a minute. By the way, when I do offer a public forum, that's when you have opportunity to talk. Okay. Is there any old business in council? Nope. Okay. I'll go over some miscellaneous business and I'll open up the floor. Um, Troy, you want to come up for miscellaneous business, please? Actually, Troy and Scott now, she's getting used to this.
I should have helped earlier with the...
Ooh. Look at her.
Oh, wow.
Jeez.
I like it back.
Oh, wow. That lasted for long.
So much for the honey.
Yeah, that lasted longer. That lasted about five hours. It's over.
How was your lunch today? How was your lunch today?
Oh, it was great. Great, thank you. Uh, good evening, council. Uh, Scott Jones, I am the new fire chief, uh, as of this afternoon, Board of Works meeting. Thank you, by the way. I'm here with the previous, uh, fire chief. Uh, as he explained earlier at the Board of Works meeting, he has been pursuing, uh, trying to replace, uh, one of our older command vehicles for a few months. And, uh, has recently, in the past couple of weeks, finally gotten some quotes in. And he presented those quotes, which I, we just, um, gave to you guys earlier to the Board of Works. And, uh, we've discussed with Rosemary and she says, um, we have money. She's found some money that we can move.
From a appropriation, yes.
Yes. Um, the Board of Works, uh, voted to proceed pending, obviously, uh, the approval of the money. Uh, the one we're trying to replace?
I think it's a 2002.
Uh, yeah.
Hundred and sixty thousand miles and you do get wet when you're driving in the rain.
They're getting some age on them, so...
We did, um, set up, um, we have 13,000 in the appropriation for vehicles. Um, we were hoping to get, save that and then maybe get another 13,000 next year while that vehicle can't wait another year or so. That's when I looked at different appropriations to see if I could find the additional $15,000 to be able to cover one of their estimates.
So, as you, as you see before you, we've got an estimate from, uh, Redmond's for a, for a Dodge truck and then from, uh, the Ford dealer for a Ford. There's a little bit of a price difference there.
If you look at the second page of the agreement, it's no confusing. That is standard number of the price, but if you look at the...
Yeah, the covers, the cover sheet for Redmond shows...
Yeah, that is state bid price.
Yeah, the cover sheet shows the state bid price, I'm sorry.
Is this a good number here, Scott, from, uh, Advantage to this one here total?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thirty-three's. Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, because the other one was 45.
Yeah. Twenty-eight.
Yeah. I think we're going to have to sit at high water there on the board. No, it's okay. It's all right.
You say this 28.
We're giving a pass.
Pardon?
It's 28 is the...
State bid.
State bid.
Yeah. And the Ford's the state bid price and Chrysler's a little bit, Dodge is a little bit cheaper on the state bid.
Any questions, council? We need to take a motion, this is?
No.
But the Board of Works.
This is a courtesy, let them know there'll be a transfer next time.
Thank you. How was your first day?
All right. For half a day. I ate.
My first three hours were pretty good.
It'll get better.
Troy, we do appreciate your 23 years.
Absolutely. Absolutely appreciate your service.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Randy, come on up.
Thank you. The police department, like the fire department, we have vehicles that we're trying to replace also. And earlier today during the Board of Works, I asked for approval for anywhere from two to five vehicles and stay within our budget. Um, we're trying to replace some 13-plus year-old Crown Bips that have 120-plus thousand miles on them. Um, and we, I've gotten some quotes like them from Redmond. And the vehicles we're looking at are in the ballpark for brand-new at 28,000. So, we're looking at that and myself and Rosemary have discussed some options within our budget that we think we can stay within them. We also have other vehicles that we've gotten from leasing companies, which are two-year-old leases. And they come with low miles. And like I mentioned at Board of Works, I don't know what police department can get a new vehicle every two years, but they do. And they're 12,000 miles or less. Uh, and we've tested the waters with that and got one of those. And it sits out back. It's a silver 2018 Charger. And it comes fully equipped. So, if we can get them from them, that's my first option because they're light new. Um, and they come totally equipped. But that's at whenever they get turned in. So, there's no prediction on when we can get those. And we're in need of especially our K9 units. That's what I want to replace first off. And I don't know when this company will get the next fleet. So, um, we're looking into possibly getting one new quoted from Redmond. Doing so though, in, if they do come up, that's where we want to go because it's totally loaded. Comes with lights, sirens, $4,000 plus total of equipment. Where if we get new, then, you know, it's 28 plus another 4,000 or so in equipment. And that's what we're trying to figure out now. But, uh, that's what we're discussing and we're going to keep that inside of our budget for the time being.
And Chief, uh, it's, it's fully equipped, light sirens, uh, console, everything you need except for...
Which one? Which vehicle?
The ones that are two-years-old.
Right. The lease.
Yeah. Except for, uh, the decals, right?
De, correct.
You will have to do that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I made a comment. This, one of the things we talked about at the Board of Works meeting is you have to buy these vehicles when they come up because they get snatched up quick.
Right.
So, that's the reason, basically, that...
Yeah, they're limited, really limited amount. And they're such a good deal that we're not the only police department in the country that's looking at those. So, we try to jump on those when we can.
These for Redmond, are they through the state bid?
Yes. I don't know how Frank Jackson actually gave us the bid, but it came to a 28.2 for a Durango, a 2020 Durango. And like those, he did show me a list like you have where the front cover's like 37,000. But he gives us a, some kind of fleet discount that brings it down to 28.2.
Because I know in the past they used to be able to get cars to the state bid depending on what dealer was involved in that state bid.
I'm not sure if Redmond's even involved in that, I'm not sure.
It was my understanding that it's state did and, um, local dealers can't participate.
Wouldn't that be the same thing as, um, as the fire department? Because that was a state bid.
Is that what you guys...
It was from Redmond.
What, it was a Durango?
No.
It was a Ram. It was a Ram, but it was, that's a state bid and it's from Redmond, so I would assume...
Yeah. And all their prices were within $500 each other, whether it's the Charger, the truck, or the Durango.
Right.
So...
And we recommend you buy whatever you recommend.
Within the budget.
Within the budget.
Lamborghini out here.
That's it.
Tesla, Tesla save on gas.
Tesla. Now, it'll take you right out of juice when you need it.
Any questions?
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of updates on everything. Uh, Brian, Dom from the Board of Works is going through insurance and equipment inventory, um, which will lead into, uh, one of our next ones. Trying to find a good way to say this. What we're uncovering is not good, just so you know. Um, we are finding a lot of, uh, insurance is one savings we'll find because we're paying for, we found that we are paying for a lot of vehicles that we don't even own anymore. Uh, we're going to go complete audit. But we're looking at a lot of different things as well with that. Now, with that, we also have equipment from, I always say, when Noah built the Ark Lifter over, that we're still utilizing, the street department. It's pretty old. So we're auditing insurance and we're looking at all of our insurance, our, our equipment to see what can we do to replace it because a lot of it's bad. In fact, I went to the street department today, a clutch, uh, arm blew through the cable or on the floor of the dump truck or whatever. You know, it's just, we have, we have equipment issues, just, I don't know the solution to that. We are looking into different options to learn how to solve it. With the money savings on insurance, um, which we have pulled off a lot of savings on insurance, you still need to be aware of that. Our workman's comp rate went from one point oh four to one point oh nine, which is a loss ratio of a hundred and eight percent from the previous year. So that's, workman's comp's gonna go up significantly. I'm working on getting numbers on that. And our property and casualty loss line ratio for the exploring year is a hundred and nineteen percent, a hundred and forty seven percent for the prior year. Um, those are both significant loss reserves and we're trying to figure those out right now. Brad's putting numbers together for us so that we can see exactly what this insurance is going to cost us.
I might wanna say Brad Wilson.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Brad Wilson. He's our insurance agent. I'm sorry, but it's just same Brad. Cause we don't know what that looks like. I know in my head what that looks like and it scares me to death. Uh, so we gotta be really, this is why we're instituting safety manuals, company policies, health issue initiatives, different things to help drivers down. And the insurance companies are gonna help us build these, by the way. They've done it before, they've done it for other places. I know Brad Wilson has helped the schools really get there. Uh, we're comp ratio down because they were high. I'm not sure exactly how much they brought it down, but we've gotta get that down because this is a lot, this equates to a lot of money that can be controlled. Not, not everything. You're, you're gonna have accidents, that's not what I mean. Uh, but a lot of that we can be, can be controlled, just with proper or safety and, uh, different issues like that. Um.
Miss Mary?
Yes, sir.
Would this be a time to mention recycling?
That's where I'm headed.
It's on Facebook now.
I got a whole list. With that, uh, our recycling program, I want to do some more clarifications. I'm not sure how, I think we got it pretty clear, but not totally clear. We were kinda thrown for a curveball this morning. Um, when I went out, Brad, they was inspecting the vehicles during the equipment inventory. We have two trash trucks that are old trash trucks that we use to pick up recycling one day a week, is that correct, Prem? And both of the frames are split, literally from the cab all the way back, one on both sides. Uh, those are non-driveable trucks according to D O T standards and A, I'm not gonna put anyone's lives at risk to pick up, uh, recycling trash. So what we've done with that is we suspended picking up our recycling until we can find a solution, which we are working on. In the meantime, we will have dumpsters down at the transfer station and it's still free. You can still take your recycling down there. It does not cost anything to put in these recycling dumpsters. You just have to do it while the business of hours are open, which I wrote it down, our, our one is eight to.
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty, Monday through Friday and eight to eleven-thirty.
Eleven-thirty on Saturday.
On Saturday.
Yes.
Um, so it's still free. You can still take your bags down there and recycle them there. I know it's a little more difficult, um, but we're, we're, we're diligently, diligently looking at other options. And I can tell you this, um, we've been looking at prices and if we were to hire out your trash collection, it would be around twenty-eight dollars a month. You pay ten now for the city and that twenty-eight does not include recycling. So if you want recycling, it's on top of that. So trash and recycling can get very expensive. Uh, we have a great service for ten dollars a month that does both and I would say kudos to Conner's Wolf for doing that.
And they pick up yard waste.
And they pick up yard waste for now. Uh, we're looking at all different options because it's, we got a whole bunch of problems. Uh, with that being said, just be patient, bear with us. Uh, we're trying to do what's effective and efficient for the town and still provide the service. I believe in recycling. Uh, it's a huge deal. It's expensive. Uh, what we do it for is just, it's unbelievable. Um, so bear with us on that one. Um, anything on that, Brad, that I'm missing?
May I add one thing?
Oh, yes, I got one thing, sir.
The recycling bins will be down at the bottom so you don't have to go all the way up to the trash station. They're down at the very bottom and they will be marked, they're identified.
Yes.
According to Mr. Tom Crease today, so.
And Mr. Mayor, I, it was my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that the recycling that's taken to the waste, to the transfer station must be in the marked bags. Is that correct?
No.
No, they have recyclable containers. Those bags are recyclable bags.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean.
You can take boxes down there.
Okay, okay, I, cause I, I thought.
As recyclable. And we're, we're gonna be doing more education on what you can recycle, what you can't recycle. Uh, Brad's putting together a huge educational program on this. Uh, we're gonna be getting a lot of information out. Um, again, we wanna make sure we do it right, so it's not gonna be out tomorrow. Uh, so we wanna build it, we wanna make sure it's correctly and then we can start educating everyone, just continually getting that out there so people know. Uh, it is a process, we can't invent the wheel overnight. Um, but Brad's doing a fantastic job and, uh, this one was a tough call, but when it comes to safety of our employees, I will always side with the safety of our employees.
I agree.
And, uh, I'm not, I'm not gonna put anyone at risk for that, just not gonna do it. Um, with that, I didn't, we are also looking, don't bombard us right now, but we are looking to help with large trash pickup. I don't know what that looks like. We are brainstorming that. There is a huge population that wants that and I think it's a good thing to offer, uh, but it's also expensive, so we're trying to work through that. So once we get the recycling figured out, once we get all this figured out, we'll make a presentation of everything, how it's gonna look like. Hopefully, we get the recycling going faster than the rest of it, um, but that is something we also want to look at doing as well. Missing anything, Brown?
Nope.
Good. Um, mark that one off. Any questions from council on that, by the way? Cause I know that's kind of a curveball. Okay. Um, training, I know city council went to training. We actually had, I thought it was one of the best trainings I went to personally. Uh, major school was fantastic. Uh, went to new elected official training. I went to clerk treasure training, which was torture for me, uh, but I learned the value of what Rosemary does. Uh, her and I banter and bicker all the time. You can see she wants to slap me sometimes and that's okay. But you know what? Um, I did learn this, she's good at what she does and her office is fantastic.
I agree.
Um, and they have, they're just doing a fantastic job. Uh, if she ever gets sick, do not call me because I am not filling your shoes. It would, actually, I don't, I could have some fun, never mind. Uh, but anyway, she's just fantastic. And the first one thing I learned from clerk treasure school was I will stay out of her way. Um, but it was good training and a lot of the elected officials went to that, so thank you for Conner's Wolf allowing us to go. It was kinda tough being gone and meeting for me because, um, we'll deal with that a little, but there's an issue we had to deal with and the, the, these guys dealt with it perfectly. Um, second thing is, is I encourage you to come down to city hall. We've painted it, we've refreshed it up, we got a lot more we wanna do. I want to thank the Arts Association. We now have, uh, paintings along the walls. Um, I was a little jealous, most of them were in my office, uh, but we tried to make it fresh new so that when businesses come in, so when visitors come in, uh, it looks, looks nice and clean. The best part is it cost us absolutely nothing. Um, I had my mom and my daughter painting my office. Um, that might cost me a little bit, but just teasing. And Shelley Nutty painting the hallways and she painted all those hallways fashionably in my office. I don't know how she does it, she's amazing, but she did a fantastic job and the paint was all donated. Uh, Sharon Williams donated the paint, so I wanna thank Ken personally. He didn't have to do that, he just stepped up. I didn't ask for it, he just stepped up and he did it. Um, so Ken, thank you and thank you for all you do for the city hall because it looks fantastic now. Um, lastly, um, I want to explain the issue on our invocation and why we shut that down. We didn't end it permanently. What we did was, in my, who was at the city council meeting?
You said you did or didn't?
We did end it permanently. You were at the city council meeting, is that correct? And I, we just did it that day. So Dave handled it perfectly, but he didn't get an opportunity to explain. No one really had an opportunity to explain. Um, what we found out is we don't have a proper procedure. It had nothing to do with the prayer, it's the fact that we don't have a procedure. So the reason I shut it down was if we don't have a procedure and we do something, we're now liable for that. And we could have been facing something bad if we didn't stop it until we get the procedure in place. We are working on a procedure, um, it's almost done. As soon as we get the procedure approved from all the lawyers and all the heads of B, we'll pass that out, we'll have to do a public meeting on it and just follow the proper procedure. So we have a proper procedure in place. That's really all it was. I hated to do it, it just, it cut to my core, uh, but it was the right thing to do so that we are protected legally and reliably. So that was the explanation for that. And with that, since I've talked, talked so much, any other miscellaneous business from council?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Brad Colter and the street department for putting the streets we brought up, they've done a good job. Uh, made a good improvement on the east side at least. I know there's more to do and I wanna thank you guys for that.
Thank Bonnie. Bonnie took care of that. She was over at the office the other day and we went, walked across the street to the restaurant and she saw that dirt and the next day they were out there riding her like, so.
Okay, I'll pass it on.
She took care of it.
And was it, was it the street department cleaned up along the barrier on Park Road? Who cleaned that up?
The barrier.
The safety barrier.
When you're driving into.
Upper north Park Road, that concrete barrier there, someone went along and cleaned all the silt and everything along that.
How about if I just say y'all? Take the credit away.
Whoever did it, I'm glad they did it. It, it looked pretty bad.
And the Christmas lights.
Can we talk about them?
Sure, you did it.
I didn't do any of it. I don't do any work, I just tell people to do stuff or ask them. Um, because the lights are coming down in the trees downtown, we took all the lights out of those and focused them in the area of the city parking lot.
A lot of them quit working, too.
So a couple of the guys come over and said, we're either gonna have to put plugs at the bottom or run the, uh, cords across the top, back and forth from tree to tree. I said, that'd sound, and they said it would look cool, so I said, try it and see what it looks like. Well, everybody really likes it.
Looks fantastic.
Looks nice.
I think they got the other trees done today, or today, so.
They're on. It looks fantastic.